All right, welcome everyone to our city council study session for July 24th. I think this is nearly the most people.
Recording in progress.
These sessions, and I still have you all here in person. I know there are some really exciting topics on the agenda today. So I will turn it over to our city administrator Allison Zolms to introduce our first topic.
Sure, Council President, Council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public. I will keep it short as you do some media topics. Just a reminder that this is a very high level overview of a significant investment that is coming to the city of Rochester and is intended as the very beginning of a number of conversations that you'll be having coming up. So with that, I turn it over to Deputy City Administrator Cindy Steinhauser.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. As Administrator Zolms said, today is intended to be really high level overview of the Bold Forward Unbound project and all the work that we're doing as in partnership with not only Mayo but DMC. And as she said, this is going to be the first of many times that we're going to be coming before you related to this project over the next few years. And so today, one of our main goals is after you hear the presentation is we're going to listen. We really want to use the time that we have today to hear your questions, hear your comments, as we anticipate that they will inform future updates and through policy act, future policy action direction that will be asking for you as pieces of this project come forward for your consideration. So in addition to myself today presenting from the Mayo team is Bridget Avikainen. Apologies Bridget if I pronounced that wrong. And Dr. Katie Arnt, as well as Patrick Seab from DMC. So first, I want to talk a little bit about how we get to this point and how you as local electives have really been positioning Rochester to flourish. So not only through the work that you have initiated, but also like we would say it really goes back to 2015. DMC legislation was established, DMC was established, really started to pave the way for confidence and growth in the private sector development. And then projects as we showed a sampling here of the many projects and leadership positions that you have taken either funding plants, funding specific projects that create confidence in the market and for private sector to feel confident in being able to invest. And the commercial development graphic that we have there is really to show you that that investment that you've made on projects and planning efforts is really paying off. We're trending at 2023 in terms of private commercial development similar toward the two highest years we have on record, which is 2018 and 2019. And so as we think about how do we ready communities to take on amazing projects like the one that you're going to hear about, it's by do making investments like this. Also want to talk about what we're doing to position us as a team to continue to collaborate and communicate and coordinate. And so we've been focusing on creating that kind of ecosystem using technology, building relationships, understanding the role of our partners and when when we lead and when we support and how we continue to move, move this work forward, how we can continue to stay aligned, create alignment on our purpose, on our milestones, stay true to those milestones, communicate when there's deviations as needed for intended deviations or or when we have to manage through unexpected surprises, right? So really wanting you to know that similar to what we're doing with BRT, which has been a really good dry run for a project of this magnitude, is that we meet very regularly, we meet weekly in various ways, communicating with each other, weekly, monthly, quarterly, continue to advance. So we're staying true to those key milestones for projects. And that's what we're prepared to do here. So again, today is really intended to be that high level overview. Here's just an example of already what we're talking about related to key milestones that are going to be coming to you over the next 12 months related to this project. You're going to be hearing the Mayo's five year plan update. There's going to be conversation around traffic right of way and street closures and closures not only during construction, but closures and traffic recirculation post-project development. And this is not unusual. This is what we find, these are the conversations we have as any big project comes forward. So again, today is really just to introduce this. And as you have questions of you has have comments as we bring these key milestones before you and ask for direction and ask for action, we want to make sure that we are answering the questions that you're likely to have had. Again, here always looking at how does the work that we're doing align with your strategic priorities? And as you can very clearly see, this aligns very well with your economic vibrancy and growth management strategy as well as that investment in the public realm. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Mayo team to come up and present.
Good afternoon, Council President Carlson and Council Members. Mayor Norton, thank you for having us. My name is Katie Arnt, Dr. Katie Arnt. I'm an anesthesiologist, I'm specifically an obstetric anesthesiologist. So normally what I'm doing at this time is keeping women safe and comfortable during cesarean deliveries. But but here I am before you to talk about reinventing healthcare. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Craig Daniels, who's actually currently covering the intensive care unit. He is a physician lead and I am his vice. This is Dr., excuse me, this is Bridget Avikainen. She is our administrator administrative lead for Bold Forward Unbound. And we're here on behalf of the entire team for Bold Forward Unbound. I just want to let you know I moved to Rochester in 1998 and I live in scenic Oaks. So why are we here? We are here because we want to reinvent healthcare. We know it's broken and we know we have some answers at Mayo Clinic to fit to fix it. And we believe Rochester is the place for that to happen. So Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester, it's a multi-year strategic initiative. It aims to transform healthcare and it focuses on investing in downtown Rochester where new and remodeled physical spaces with integrated technology will better serve our staff as well as all of our evolving needs of our patients. This new and reimagined downtown campus will transform healthcare within our community and enhance our ability to care for patients with serious complex diseases. It will keep the patients and our staff at the center. It will help patients and visitors feel more connected to Mayo Clinic and experience true continuity of care before they arrive and after they leave. The investments are not just in physical spaces, they're also in technology as well. It will incorporate state of the art flexible physical spaces and fully integrate that digital technology into the seamless care for patients. And it will enable our multidisciplinary practice, research and education teams to work alongside each other closely with fewer burdens. It will contribute to the continued success of Rochester as a destination medical center and we will transform healthcare for the world.
Thank you, Dr. Arnt, and just adding my appreciation to be able to join you all today. Bridget Avikainen, I have lived in Rochester or the greater Rochester area for the last 27 years and it's really an honor to join you. But we we like to say that this is really more than a building project. We feel like we're continuing the legacy of Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. And it's really an honor to be part of shaping the future of healthcare in a way that only Rochester Mayo Clinic and our destination medical initiative can do. So and while we share and will share some of the physical footprint aspects associated with this historic initiative, we also want to showcase our approach to healthcare through the digital lens. We're thinking very carefully of the intersection between physical space design as well as digital and technology capabilities. We certainly will know more about our patients in the future before they even arrive, creating opportunities to address pre-visit, care needs, orientation, capturing of personal preferences through digital means even before they step foot in Rochester to create a more seamless experience for them, their loved ones and caregivers. And that we really are looking forward to better anticipating the needs of our patients and their loved ones. Similarly, through the patient's journey, we believe that digital capabilities and technology that are part of the infrastructure will make it possible to have more human connections, elevating the way the work that people do and and work that only people can do to support our collaborative and team-based care models. Healthcare will remain a deeply human experience. And as a patient's time in Rochester comes to an end, we recognize that there's an important transition as they depart from our campus and return home wherever that may be. We want patients to feel connected and know that Mayo is there for them when they need them the most. We're creating this new ecosystem that really brings together the digital and physical design from arrival, care delivery journey and departure and ongoing connection. There really are incredible possibilities to consider in the digital realm that keeps people at the center and enables more opportunity to connect with our patients and amongst each other, enabling us to evolve to the adapt, adapting needs of our patients. The next slide talks a little bit about our campus today. We have a long 150 year plus history in Rochester and a strong legacy, both at St. Mary's and in the downtown areas. We really want to build on these strengths and infuse in our facilities with a state of art flexibility and sustainable infrastructure that will allow us to meet the needs of future generations, just as the leaders did before us with investments like in St. Mary's, the historic plumber building, the Franklin Heating Station, just to name a few. The next slide is a bird's eye view that we shared back in June. And this provides kind of an early sense of the spaces that we're exploring in the downtown area. We want to work with our neighbors, the city of Rochester and our other key stakeholders to make sure that we have the right information and that we're making informed decisions. As I just kind of stepped through this diagram, what you'll see kind of in the green, blue gradient spaces would be those that would be proposed clinical buildings, really highlighting the connectivity from Mayo, Gonda to some of our other spaces. Just as important are the ancillary support buildings that would be to the north and south of those clinical spaces, including parking, utilities, power, infrastructure as well as logistics. West logistics is a concept that maximizes clinical space by consolidating, optimizing and co-locating supplies and services that can be provided on an as needed or just in time manner. The proximity to clinical spaces is critical, but it also allows us new ways to manage and move supplies throughout our campus. This model allows also for steady incremental growth for support service departments like linen, pharmacy, materials management and sterile processing to readily scale to meet the needs of our practice. Logistics centers often see an increase in efficiency, improve safety and quality and staff satisfaction. This allows us to optimize clinical spaces for direct patient care activities. So with that, I will close my section. Thank you for your time today and I'll turn it back to Dr. Arnt.
Thanks, Bridget. So as we go to the Board of Trustees later on this year, we want to go with the confidence to know that what we have planned is possible and that's why we're here today. So this planning, it's a long-term initiative and it's already underway. In May of 2023, the Board of Trustees reviewed and approved moving forward on the next step of this high level design plan for the redevelopment and reconfiguration of our campus here. And we're sharing this now to be transparent about our exciting intentions for downtown. And we really want Rochester, the whole Rochester community to have an opportunity to engage in the process. We're seeking final approval of our plans in late 2023, which means construction could begin as early as 2024. So at this point, I will hand it over to Patrick, is that right?
Yes, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Bridget and Dr. Arnt, Patrick Seab at Destination Medical Center. If a Fortune 500 company had announced plans to build a multi-billion dollar investment in a community, cities across America would be tripping over themselves to tell their story about why their city would be the best place for this. They'd be telling the story about their education, their workforce development, their housing opportunities, the leadership in their community. And in fact, you have been telling that story through the work that you've been doing, through championing important causes to working on strategies for affordable housing, to workforce development. And it is in that environment and in that spirit that Mayo is on this journey to hopefully make a decision for this expansion. And if if I want to underscore the point that this is a decision in process, it's not a decision concluded. And you're going to be hearing thing, hearing about things that they need of you in order to advance this project. But I think importantly, they're going to need to hear from the community about what it needs from the community for this project to be successful. Mayo Clinic's success, the number one healthcare provider in the country and the world is predicated on their own innovations and their own capacity, but it's also on the community that surrounds it. A community that the business community that provides services to patients and visitors, an education community that provides workforce and talent, a housing community that builds and responds to housing demands. The the efforts that we've done around diversifying the workforce, these are all the attributes that the Rochester community brings to making it attractive for Mayo Clinic to choose to make this investment here. And certainly some requests will be needed from you. But I think a larger message is that this community has surrounded Mayo and supported Mayo and it will need to do so going forward and into the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Dr. Katie and Bridget for joining us. As Patrick said, we are, we were trying to convey to you is that we we have really positioned Rochester. We are excited. This is amazing project. It's amazing the work that's been done up to date. Our team is committed to making sure that there is alignment with this project and your strategic priorities and that we do this in a collaborative way and that we be responsive to the community and to your direction. So with that, we'd love to hear, you know, the kinds of questions and information that you would like for us to bring forward to future presentations and when we come for a future policy direction and action.
Thank you so much for sharing this with us. It's just really an exciting time as we think about the future of Rochester and our work together across the city and Mayo Clinic and other partners. And really wonderful to hear you thinking of the community engagement strategy and making sure that this huge initiative and huge investment in the community will also be done with the thinking that this does have an impact in our community and we want to make sure we're doing it in a way that benefits the city overall and the people who live and breathe and work here. So thank you for that thoughtfulness. Are there comments or questions? We're again, we're keeping it at a high level. We have about 10 minutes and just sharing feedback or thoughts to bring back at a future meeting, it sounds like, okay. Councilmember Wall.
I'm just as excited as all get out. And I've been around the community since about 1965 and have seen a lot of the nice things that Mayo has been able to do and the changes they've been able to make in the world, including in my own family. I have a friend who works in facilities as an engineer and maybe two months ago, we were talking about this and he said, you know, building that Gonda, that was that was the capstone of my career. And now by a matter of multipliers, this will be something more in the way of bringing good to the world. So boy, you have my great support moving forward and all that we can do to help make this happen for the community and the far reaches.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I echo what you said, Mr. Wall. During the presentation, I believe it was you, Dr. Arnt, that mentioned something about a percentage of the funding is going to physical space, but as well to direct care for patients. Is there a breakdown at this early stage of what percentages those may be were for physical space versus the service model that we all know and love that Mayo gives?
I think at this point, at high level information, Bold Forward Unbound in Rochester is really a portfolio of projects. So yes, we will have a large amount dedicated to clinical space, but we will also have a logistics building and we're planning for parking and then utilities, power and infrastructure that's associated with kind of those support services within the environment. I don't have an exact breakout of.
Too early to tell. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, thank you. And I would agree with Mr. Wall. This is exciting and great, wonderful investment in our community for a world famous hospital. Is there an example in the United States of some project that's the size that you have right now that you're proposing?
We are the number one hospital in the world, so no. There are examples. We have visited multiple different places, including in Indiana. You may have, we have teams that have gone around to pretty much almost every newly built hospital in the country and world actually. And our our design firms have been a part of many of those as well. Bridget, anything more you want to add?
We just spent some focus time at Indiana Health University, which they have a very similar sized kind of mega scale project where they're building new hospital facilities as well as logistics and parking. Just understanding kind of their lessons learned and you know, how did that impact their community? So we're we're very much trying to collaborate within the healthcare industry. We're also benchmarking with what's happening outside of healthcare as well.
And what I keep hearing is that that the Viking Stadium was a billion dollars and you're playing in almost four billion dollar project. And I know Duluth had their new hospital just opened as almost a billion dollar hospital in Duluth. And so just for people's example, you know, if you're four times the size of that, that's a huge investment and we do appreciate it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, this is really good to see when I think of the different DMC investments we've been doing at a more practical level. I know we're not ready to answer this, but I'm watching the streets. And of course, my big worry is the streets being closed. But I think that's we're way far ahead of that before talking about that. But but I'm also looking and saying, is there a, is this aligned with links such that Second Street is where the employees come in? And then the other side or the north side is more the patient side? Or is there any concept like that or?
Sure, yeah. So the arrival experience is actually something that we've been really invested in designing to be good. And it is going to be innovative and amazing with lots of different ideas out there. But in general, there will be arrival almost from 360 degrees around these buildings in order that one area doesn't get congested more. But the main arrival for patients would probably be off of Civic Center as you come in from that north side. You know, in the end, can I, can we say that for sure right now? No, of course, this is still a proposal, right? We have, we don't have Board of Trustees approval, but that would be the design that would probably work best. As far as Bus Rapid Transit, we are absolutely integrated there.
Yeah, I would can say I, we are, as she said, we are very integrated in that. We are not concerned about, as she said, you know, entrance could be 360. You know, how how they're looking at where their arrival is. But we know regardless that the the investment that you're making in BRT is going to be enhanced by this project because we anticipate continued, if not increased usage of the BRT corridor upon completion of this project.
Okay, no, that's good to hear. And I figured, you know, with the players involved, the BRT would be front and center. But I, but that idea that there's a back office where the employees come in versus the front door, you, I'm not getting clear on that.
Yeah, Councilmember Keen, I think I, it's a great question, one. But two, we understand that parking, mobility and transportation are really ways that and flows that we need to deeply understand as we do our planning. And historically, patient flow has been different than staff flow within the Mayo campus. And we are very well aligned with the RT planning and looking at how staff and patients will kind of experience and enter the campus. So we're being very sensitive to that and more of that will come out as we do further planning and and happy to follow up further.
I just, I just get it out that it's on my mind as I watch this because I, again, I can't comprehend a traffic study, but I'm looking at these, you know, those circle points and I'm thinking of these buses that come in from the different places. And I'm just trying to get a feel for it and what, I mean, what our downtown is with with this medical center right in the middle of it. A slightly different question, I just want to think if you can give me any insights into understanding. I noticed right away you talk about Bold Forward in Rochester has to do with serious complex diseases, which sort of brings me to the fact that I'm one of those like southeast clinics and the northwest clinics and how the local community interacts with Mayo. I'm picturing that as that's where our our doctors are and then it's referral to this major medical center downtown. Is that a good mental model for me or is that not how I should think of it?
Sure. So I always like to think about serious and complex disease does means also Rochester community members, right? Because there are plenty of community members with serious complex disease. So your question kind of is where will primary care take place? So primary care in this new big building may not be the most convenient for patients. We want that to be convenient. And actually, we have a number of projects going on, making sure that we're being innovative within our primary care experience for patients as well. Having said that, you know, I mean, as people that live in Rochester have serious and complex disease, this is where this is where those physicians will be. I I can almost think of it as if you need lots of physicians to take care of you that need to coordinate with each other. This is what that is about. This is about our multidisciplinary care model. If it's, you're just going to be interacting with one person to talk, discuss your hypertension and stuff, that will probably be in in spaces that will also be renewed in various different ways and amazing, but probably not in this condensed model here. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, that's helpful because I, I mean, I could make the model that I'm the same as someone living in Eau Claire. I could be at Mayo there and get referred here. But I think that idea of it's when it's coordinated care is the is the key, the key phrase there. And I think that helps me understand what you're trying to do a little better. Last thing, and again, this isn't so much a question as much as what's on my mind. As these major changes try to happen downtown, I know you work closely with the city, but I'm also picturing our downtown and our other, you know, the the major DMC investments that have happened or the major private investments. How does Mayo stay connected to those? When I look at these maps and you have 40% of the property, but not 100%. So how did, how do you interact with these, I'll call them your neighbors in the downtown?
Yeah. I would just say, I think it's an important point that you raised and shared, but we are really proud of our external engagements strategy and team. And so we do a lot of that outreach work through that particular group and our public relations communications team area.
And if I can just jump in and and actually would be a good discussion for our fall presentation of how we are making sure, how does this project coexist with other projects that are happening? And all of the conversations that we are having, just even as a city team, whether it's the work of all the partners at the downtown task force or specific street infrastructure projects or housing projects that we're being cognizant of how we communicate with each other as partners across the system as well as do collaboration and coordination of the timing of those projects. So they, we minimize disruption to the extent that we can.
Very good. Yeah. So again, I too am really glad to see this sort of like commitment to the downtown. But I think when anything this big, there's always chances for like the the road closures there are so scary to me because we've recently done other things on those streets. I think as long as we're, you know, doing this sort of good collaborative design and and Mayo's cooperating with a partner with the city and with the city, other city residents, I think we're on a good path.
We hear you. Thank you. We love downtown Rochester. I like to eat downtown and as you see restaurants close and stuff, it just, yeah, so we hear you.
So I'm going to quickly build on that, then hand it over to Councilmember Dennis and the mayor because mine relate to Councilmember Keen. So I've shared these before, but my top questions and concerns are making sure we still have access as to our primary care as community members, right? I've talked about that with your team before. And then also the the east side of Gonda and Mayo continuing to be engaged with the rest of downtown. So it's not sort of Mayo shut off to the rest of our very our community where we're really continuing to invest in as part of DMC and the city work. So that's my two cents. Councilmember Dennis, go ahead and Mayor Norton.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And I have to echo a few of my colleagues, Councilmember Wall, with what a blessing to have the best hospital in the world in our backyard. So I've, I just can't speak more highly about the work that you do as a physician and as as an amazing life-saving entity. So thank you for that. But I also want to, a little bit what Councilmember Keen had mentioned, maybe maybe kind of to feed off of that. You mentioned in your introduction that Rochester, that you want to have Rochester very involved in this this plan. Can you, with the high overview, it's kind of hard to ask questions. But can you give some examples on how you want Rochester residents, community have no connection to Mayo, work for the school district or work for other situation worlds? How are you going to get their input and public engagement? Thank you.
So again, just in the interest of time, we are happy to come back and share with you. I mean, we see things in buckets, so like our communication outreach strategy. I think that would be a really good topic for us to come back and be able to do a deeper dive because I. because I anticipate that the answer is going to lead to more questions. So again, I'm, I'm hearing about impact and integration across downtown. I'm hearing communication strategy, I'm hearing transportation connectivity strategy. So if it's okay, can we?
Yeah.
Take those comments? With all due respect, I totally hear what you're saying. I think um, when sometimes we come back, things have been already done. And so I think public engagement is needed at the very beginning of all processes of the UDC, of all processes. Um, because that's when things haven't been invested quite yet. So uh, I just love.
Randy Schubring, Mayo Clinic, uh, Community Engagement, uh, Council President Carlson, Councilmember Dennis, uh, uh, to both your comments and Councilmember uh, uh, Keen's comments, we've actually met with one neighborhood twice already, the Kotski Park Neighborhood Association, to really get their feedback. Uh, we've met with uh, with some advocacy groups, the uh, Downtown Roch- uh, the Rochester Downtown Alliance will also be meeting with uh, Fallwell Neighborhood, uh, Slatterly Park Neighborhood. And we will also be uh, holding neighborhood information meetings uh, for each of the individual development projects that are in that package. The first time you will hear from us as a council is for our five-year plan, which will include all of these uh, specific projects. So I hope that helps.
Okay. And Councilmember Dennis, I know you meet with Mr. Schubring.
I like and so more, more, yes, for transparency and for people hearing.
Oh, we're short on time, so.
Well, you know, our, our council.
All right.
She's pretty packed.
What's your next question?
I have, yeah, a couple of questions, maybe, maybe this should be a its own study session. Uh, the couple of other questions I had, um, well, so one of the things, just today, I was uh, stopping by uh, to an appointment of, for my vehicle. And someone was very upset because her and her family were moving out of Rochester because her young daughter can't afford to live here. And the housing, you know, you know, with affordable housing, it'd been an incredible crisis right now. When you're, I imagine with this investment of billions of dollars, there is going to be uh, more jobs created, which is phenomenal, more high-paying jobs, which is wonderful. Um, what is the outlook for helping those who maybe work in the school district like myself who made sixteen thousand full-time a year? Or other Perez or other people in the school district who are going to be really struggling even more when, when the demand for housing increases?
So again, I would like to include that as an update on our whole housing strategy. If that would be okay, if we could put that as a deeper dive for that session?
Yeah.
Okay, well, all right, and how many jobs do you think are going to be, be created with this amazing new program?
I have, that's coming with a five-year plan, is that right? We'll have more information on that five-year plan.
Councilmember Dennis, when uh, we see the five-year plan, you will get an inventory of the current state of all uh, employees that are here in Rochester uh, and where they're located, both uh, both physically and whether or not they're virtual. When it comes to forecasting what this project, which is a multi-year project, we're in the front end of it, it's at least seven years. It's difficult to forecast what uh, what the uh, what the long-range uh, employment will mean. What you do need to know though is Mayo Clinic employment has gone up for the last uh, last ten years.
I'll just jump in and say, we're going to be doing an economic impact analysis and we'll be bringing that information to you.
Good, wonderful. And I know you talked about digital work and creating more digital connect. I'm not that techie, so I hope more like, there's a lot of jobs still for people to help those who aren't as techie. But my last uh, for time restraint, I have many more questions. But my last question, just to chime off of Councilmember Keen's um, question a little bit maybe, or perhaps uh, about serious and complex diseases. We are in the age of global pandemics. For the safety of residents who live in Rochester, we will probably see more unique, I'm, I'm, I'm just assuming if, if this is the focus, unique uh, diseases and um, illnesses coming into our city. Is there any work with the city for med- mitigation of risk? For if case there is uh, something unique and different and, you know, so, and you're just the safety of our, our population here in Rochester.
So again, I think that we could bring that back as we better understand how the programming is going to lay out with this facility and the interface with the city. Again, this is a multi-year project, great, great questions. This is really important feedback for us to have so we can inform future presentations. But I don't know that we are prepared to talk about how we might interface. Uh, right now, we're talking about how do we get the project built? Um, and then understanding what that connectivity is with uh, local collaboration. So great question.
Councilmember Dennis, if you have additional questions, I think Mr. Schubring would be.
Why, I definitely do. When will this, um, when will the more not over, um, you know, the high view of this project, when is, when is, and can come back to council when we can ask more specific details uh, for?
Sure, so the next thing is the five-year plan update. And then we will um, we, we will better understand after you give us feedback on the five-year plan update, the next other critical milestone is their fall leadership um, getting, giving them leadership meeting, giving them direction on the project. And then really understanding once it gets approved, hopefully because it's an exciting project, what needs to happen over the next twelve months. So five-year plan is the next critical update. And then we will put some time on the schedule once um, there is direction from their leadership meeting in the fall.
When, when might that be, a five-year plan update?
Five-year plan, uh, it's in. Pardon me?
October second.
October second, October second, okay, thank you so much.
Mayor Norton?
I'll just make this quick, but I just, it's been an exciting couple of months uh, since we got word that Unbound was going to be uh, a possibility in this community. So um, it's exciting on a number of fronts. I think the very first is that this is going to be um, the, the innovations and that technology to improve patient care is really at the heart of the excitement that this is taking healthcare to that next level. And I love um, your comment about, you know, sometimes the system, we feel like the system is broken and that, that our Mayo Clinic, that our community is going to be on the forefront of, of making the changes that are necessary to provide the best care at the, hopefully at the best cost and the best value for patients as well as um, the, the best outcome. So really excited on that front. Also, um, you know, we've been working on Destination Medical Center and we've been doing some of these um, upgrades to our community. And I think this is the for what? This is the for what? We have been doing this so that Mayo Clinic already established in our community can continue to grow and thrive in this community. And so I think it, it builds on that and that, you know, the screen in front of us that has, you know, Rochester DMC and Mayo Clinic, it is going to be moving ahead, the three entities working together. And I think as um, some of the folks here have mentioned, what's going to be so key is not just getting input from the community, that will be necessary. Um, but more, it's helping them understand the why and what Mayo Clinic is doing. And I think, you know, w- we hear about it here at the table, but sometimes I think you know, it's not lost that people in their homes down the street may not be hearing the same thing. So I think anything we can do and maybe the three of us working together can really, really hone in a message about what Mayo Clinic is doing once a decision has been made and how that aligns nicely with Destination Medical Center and the vision that this city has as a city of health that's growing and thriving in the future. So thanks for the presentation. I know it's really high level, I look forward to what's next.
Thank you, everyone, thank you. Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item. And introduce it.
Certainly, uh, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. Um, we have quite a large team here today. Um, I would just invite up Ben Bolt and I do think this is a good segue. Um, this conversation is really about if provided the opportunity, what are some ways that you can strategically invest and reinvest in some of your uh, facilities in the city of Rochester? As noted in the presentation before, um, we always need to be thinking about not just what are, is available today and what are our needs today, um, but what are our needs tomorrow? So hopefully, um, what's presented on this item will help to give a better picture to the community and to the council um, on what the results of a significant amount of engagement have um, provided um, in the report that's being presented. So with that, I would turn it over to Ben Bolt. He has been a strategic lead on this um, and works in Parks and Recreation.
Great, thank you. Uh, members of the council, mayor, thank you for having us today. My name is Ben Bolt, uh, with the Parks and Rec Department. And uh, this morning, or this afternoon, we'll be giving update on the regional sports and recreation complex. Um, just a few things to recap here quickly. As you all know, this is one of the four projects being considered for the sales tax extension, that um, sales tax extension was authorized at the state level this spring and uh, would be something going before the voters uh, this fall in order for it to be extended. Um, this afternoon, again, we'll be talking about the regional sports and recreation complex. And uh, just again, as a little more recap, as you remember, in February, uh, you authorized uh, this project start with an agreement with our consultant team uh, represented by ISG, LSC Architects and Sports Facilities Companies. And the scope of that work was to include a gap analysis, community engagement, preliminary design program and uh, future operations and maintenance plan. Uh, the consultant team, along with city staff, started right after that agreement was made and uh, began that work. Also in February, we've had a great opportunity to engage many members of the community during that time. And that data that was collected during the gaps analysis and uh, as the standards of the industry were reviewed, along with all the input we received during the community engagement is what is directly informing the preliminary design that'll be shared with you today. So uh, this afternoon, we'll be hearing from several members of the consultant team, including Kyle Erie and Amanda Processor, Prosser from ISG, Nicole Bachnight and Jennifer Anderson Tuttle from LSC Architects. And Evan Ella will be joining us online uh, from Sports Facilities Companies. So with that, I will turn it over to Kyle.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers and Mayor and other city staff members that we've been working with. My name is Kyle Erie with ISG and we are excited. Um, our project is not near as exciting as the one you just heard about. There's no comparison to US Bank Stadium or anything like that. Um, but a very exciting project nonetheless for our community. And it has been, uh, it's been an honor to work with the city on this. This does mark the end of our current scope of services for this very early uh, preliminary program design, gaps analysis, community engagement and operate, uh, probably most importantly, an operations and maintenance plan. Um, the plan that really identifies how to make this project sustainable well into the future. I'm going to hit on sort of just high-level overview of our scope of work. And then other team members, we're going to start with presenting our recommended option. And then after going through that, uh, we will talk a little bit more about our process, how we got there, and then wrap up with our operations and maintenance plan. Should have been included in your packet, our full presentation as well as the full report.
Kyle, do you want questions throughout the presentation or?
If it's okay with you, we do have a fairly brief presentation that we'd like to go through and then have Q and A afterwards. That's okay? Um, so just on kind of overall project goals, the regional sports and recreation complex, so there is a need for it to be of regional significance um, required per the anticipated funding stream. Um, as a part of that, that, that draws the sports tourism, the sports and amateur um, tournament draw as well as major events. Um, as a part of that, that's part of that economic driver, filling hotel rooms on weekends and just generally bringing a lot of tourism dollars to the community. In terms of the community benefit, uh, both from the sports and recreation side, um, it, it potentially provides another uh, complex for the community to engage in uh, local sports and recreation, provides that overall additional capacity to the overall network and uh, just opens up capacities on the existing uh, existing sports and recreation uh, assets in the community. Quality of life issue, um, you know, as we, as we just heard, continued major investments coming in the community. And something like this is, is just a community benefit um, that helps uh, recruit and retain uh, community members. So for our uh, scope of work, um, Ben kind of introduced what the, what the scope was. This is again, very early stage, and so this is just a part of the overall process. And, and like I said, this is, this does mark the end of our existing scope of services. So uh, it limits the city's investment in this upfront and until it is a funded project. So with that in mind, their site selection is not a part of our scope of services at this time. Uh, what we have put in our report is a criteria for site selection. We identify, you know, just a size requirement in terms of acres and then uh, site attributes that would uh, put a site kind of towards the top in terms of site selection. It does involve heavy community engagement. We've had, uh, we'll talk in more detail about that later, but a lot of engagement with the community to hear what the community needs and wants are. And we have a kind of a custom tailored community engagement strategy through this to make sure that we are hearing from everybody. Again, the operations and maintenance plan is critically important. Uh, it's one thing to have a project envisioned, designed, constructed. It's another thing to make sure that it's sustainable in its operations and maintenance plan. Uh, schedule-wise, we started, as Ben mentioned, middle of February. And wrapping up at this time, our work started right away with an inventory analysis and a gaps analysis. And we started with a community-wide survey. That results of that survey and initial gaps analysis helped inform our community engagement strategy moving forward. And all the while, moving, moving forward on our design and our program uh, analysis. And it's been an iterative process. The, the list on the right side of the slide, the key considerations, these are the considerations that um, any of the uh, programs or recommendations that we come up with are sort of checked against. With that, we're going to jump into our recommendations.
Thank you, Kyle. So the program development for the complex was an iterative process. And we took into account the following key factors as we worked through with various options. So feedback from the three thousand plus touchpoints we had with the community, fifteen plus events, fifteen plus organizations, the community working group and city staff. We also took into account results from the gaps analysis, best practices, case studies from across the nation and trends in the industry. So our team and the community working group, whom some of our uh, members are present in the audience here today, uh, we're also committed to aligning the design program with the city's goals and priorities, including access, equitability, economic vitality, all of which played a central role in shaping this program. So as we look at uh, the resulting preferred program option, this option addresses community recreation needs and includes the required components necessary for a tournament-capable facility, all while providing flexibility within it for the city to use and program it how they see fit. So before we jump into this diagram, I have to point out that um, that note at the bottom of the page, this is not intended to be a design. It's a two-scale programmatic diagram that's really uh, meant to just illustrate scaled space required for the project components. So the hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot indoor facility includes multi-court space that would be able to accommodate eight full-size basketball, sixteen volleyball and twenty-four pickleball courts with ample space in between for safe and comfortable spectator seating. To maximize the use of the space above that gymnasium, there would be a walking running track about a fifth of a mile in length. And then as you look just below that uh, yellow court block, there's also a team workout space, which is meant to support training camps and fitness recreation programming. There are also a couple of team rooms, individual changing rooms, lockers and a space for a medical partner and athletic training. And then to the right of the court space, we have flexible use indoor turf, a children's play area, flexible community space, caffeine concessions, prayer, reflection and wellness rooms, restrooms and administrative space. And then we have entry lobby, circulation, storage, uh, mechanical uh, spaces all round out that hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot footprint. You'll also see that a future synthetic turf field, which is approximately the size of a full-size soccer field and twelve dedicated pickleball courts and a rock climbing area are also proposed. Uh, these are all items requested by the community, but to keep that project within the sixty-five million dollar budget, they have been noted as future. These items could be easily added on and are also really good candidates for public-private partnerships. For the outdoor program, there are twelve multipurpose synthetic turf fields with an option to add four in the future. And these fields would accommodate soccer, lacrosse, football um, and general recreation use. And we're also showing uh, two of the multipurpose, purpose fields to include striping and netting so that they could accommodate softball and baseball fields, just to show how that use could be integrated as well. And in addition to the, the fields, we have 12 dedicated pickleball courts, one outdoor basketball court playground. And three multi-purpose concession restroom and storage buildings. And then the blocks in gray there. They indicate the required amount of parking space that would be needed to support both the outdoor and the indoor amenities. General circulation, stormwater and some general recreation amenity space. So in total. 20 or 75 to 90 acres would be required to accommodate both indoor and outdoor. To provide a sense of, you know, what the space could look like, we've developed a few preliminary renderings. The first image here shows what the gymnasium space could look like when it's set up for general rec- recreation use. You know, and this facility is proposed to be flexible and a quick change facility. So. This image shows how utilizing movable mat system could quickly convert the space from. Basketball use during the day to pickleball play in the evening on all or some of the courts. And the next few images here provide a vantage point from that elevated walking or running track. And it could also be used as additional spectator viewing during large tournaments. And lastly, a rendering here that shows the outdoor facility space and what that could look like. So our team acknowledges that. Every request voiced in the engagement process well heard. Is not reflected in the final recommended program option. You know, we heard that aquatics of varying levels throughout the community. Is a need and with the addition of soldiers, soldiers field aquatic center splash pads. And other conversations in the works, we believe this will be in addressed elsewhere. We also heard that there's a need for more improved softball and baseball facilities to really facilitate tournament play. You know, and one of the benefits of the proposed program and those assets in particular, those multi-purpose fields. Is that it will hopefully allow the community to reimagine and re-reposition the existing baseball and softball facilities. So. There's an opportunity for, for expansion and, and more access. And lastly, we identified through the gaps analysis that there is need for outdoor basketball courts. And through the community engagement, we confirmed that this is really needed at a neighborhood park level. People want to have basketball courts that they can walk to. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Nicole to share the key points of the gaps analysis.
Thank you, Amanda. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nicole Bachnight with LSE Architects. And I will be talking through the process of how the data collection from the gaps analysis directly informed of the programming that Amanda just presented. So as you all heard in our May update, we started this process off of the gaps analysis that looked both at local recreation use. And the gaps within the Rochester community. And what are the gaps to meet that regional tournament facility threshold, which I'll touch on on the next slide. All of this data that was collected and used, you know, we put that into context. With a bunch of the other components within the process. So that includes, you know, what are the current conditions of the facilities? Does that meet a local recreation use? Does that meet a need for regional, regional tournaments? Also, other improvements that Amanda just touched on, we consider that goals for this project. The data collected was also infused with the community input that my colleague Jennifer will touch on later. And then also the budget and performance. So that goes to that operations and maintenance plan. So the data does not stand alone. It was incorporated with all of these other components throughout the process. So there's a key components that are needed for a regional sports tourism complex. And as you saw Amanda presented. All of these have been included in our preliminary proposed program. So the. Sufficient parking, you know, that's needed obviously for both the indoor and the outdoor. People need convenient places to park. High quality and convenient concessions. This is a place where this component actually overlaps what we heard from the community. So we heard extensively from the community that they would like food options at this complex to be culturally sensitive. And be encompassing of all of the different cultures reflected in Rochester. And so that is something you will see, we've included that in our final report as an opportunity to really showcase the community at this complex. High quality playing spaces, you see that reflected in our inclusion of synthetic turf fields. You know, we get. More use out of those for a longer period of time and are just a better high quality playing surface. That really attracts those regional tournaments. And finally, amenities dedicated to spectator comfort. You also saw that reflected in the renderings. We provided ample space of for spectator seating for these regional tournaments. So all of these were identified as critical components that have now been incorporated into the preliminary design. And then finally, some more high level takeaways of the entire process. So we did find that a number of current facilities within Rochester. Do not meet this threshold requirement for regional sports and recreation complex. And so that is why we've included those for this project to give it that regional and economic draw. We've also identified the highest needs from this gaps analysis. So the multi-person, multi-purpose fields. And the synthetic turf fields, those are both incorporated because those are identified as high needs that also overlaps with what we saw. And we'll talk about in the public input comments that we got. And then outdoor basketball courts as Amanda addressed, then you know, that's really a local need that we feel can be served at local parks. Instead of at our facility. Another big key component that also overlapped with the community input was the accessibility issues. You know, we want this facility to be affordable and accessible for everyone. And by building this facility, you know, that could take some stress off of other current facilities and create better access for everyone at all facilities. So those are some of the high level takeaways from the gaps analysis and I will turn over to my colleague Jennifer Anderson Tuttle to talk about the community input.
Thank you, Nicole. Chair Carlson, members of the council, Mayor Norton, thank you. Nicole has shared a great high level summary of what the gap analysis has identified as the needs for a regional sports and recreation center. And at the same time. The program design that our team developed and Amanda share. Was developed with great consideration for the input gathered from the community engagement process. That engagement process, which began in February of this year was designed by the city. By ISG and by LSE Architects. It is a robust, multi-layered and all-inclusive process. We utilize the IAP two spectrum for public engagement for transparency purposes. And. In fact, we believe that it's one of the most robust engagement projects the city has conducted with input of over 3,000 participants during this process. Some of that input gathered was gathered in a variety of ways. Again, I mentioned it was multi-layer. One of those layers, first of all, was the community working group, which Amanda did reference. That group included 14 to 15 individuals with representation from organizations such as Mayo Clinic, who you heard from earlier. IMAA Rochester Public Schools, Olmsted County, Age Friendly Olmsted, Inclusion Forward. Rochester Sports Foundation, Rochester Chamber of Commerce and the Sports Mentorship Academy. Also input also included responses from approximately 1,900 residents who responded to surveys. From two open houses, the third of which is planned for this fall. Outreach events, which were identified to ensure that we were hearing from the diversity of the community. And those included over 1,000 attendees and included events such as Rochester Pride Event, Juneteenth. Walk Around the World Event, Franklin Elementary, Safe City Nights and a few others. We also held six focus group meetings. And there were 20 city staff meetings. So you can see how this multi-layer process was very robust, very inclusive. And involved over 3,000 participants. So we'll go to the next slide. Oh, I have to do it. Sorry. We've done this virtually so many times. So what did we hear from all of this input? Some of what we heard aligns very closely with all of the input that the gap analysis has already identified. So there were a lot of really. Aligning elements. There were other elements that we have altered. The program design to closely reflect what we heard from the community. Some of them were additive and some of them were, were changes. One of those being, of course, we heard that accessibility is very important to your community. Important that it be beyond what someone might think of as code required accessibility. And so really focusing on that component. We heard from residents that they felt there was a real need for additional space and resources that are affordable. And available for community use. So making sure there are enough space for community use to make that possible. We also heard that they understand that part of having space available includes providing flexible space. And quality materials such as turf fields, which would extend playability and support that use. We heard that multi-purpose space, like the interior renderings that our team did that Amanda shared with you. Showed indoor courts that are able to be used both for pickleball and for basketball. At our community events, we heard loudly from your youth community that basketball is important and they wanted to see those amenities. At the same time, we heard from your very enthusiastic pickleball community that that was an important component. And so we've looked at systems and solutions that would support both with equal quality facilities. From all of the input that we gathered. We have heard that. An indoor walking track is also something from particularly your senior community that are looking for some safe. Winter activities that would support wellness. We want to make sure that we also talk about the outdoor fields. I think Amanda hit on those very well, but looking at 12 turf fields that I mentioned, the community supported the idea of those being turf. To extend a play. And I think she also addressed the idea of the indoor pool, which. Outdoor is currently being, currently being developed with your soldier field. And the indoor pool was not thought to be one that was necessarily part of a regional. Sports draw, but certainly something to keep on your community list of things to talk about. So we hope that you'll see from all of these that we think of this project as one that, that will extend. The wellness for your community overall and tie nicely into your previous. Discussion with Mayo Clinic. From that, I'm going to turn it over to. Evan, is Evan online then? Okay, Evan is online to talk about cost, operations and the maintenance plan. I'm going to stay up and do slides for him.
Thank you very much. Can you see, can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Very good. Well, I will start here with the opinion of costs as the first slide. We wanted to provide a range of costs and so we expect this project to come in at. The low end or actually below the low end. If you were built it today, we, in all of these ranges, we have provided. Both a contingency and a future escalation line. So again, when you're looking at this range from 65 to 81 million dollars. We expect the project to be at the low end of this, but did want to provide some contingency above and beyond what would be in a single cost or opinion of cost. Just to account for things like ebb and flow in costs of the construction industry, the timing of your build. The site and the site requirements, obviously, as Kyle mentioned earlier, site selection was not part of this, part of this project. And then of course, your decisions as owners in terms of what to include, the fit and finish, the type of building, et cetera. If you go to the next slide, it's one thing to. Build the building. You also need to plan for ownership of the building and the long-term cost of ownership. And so we provided. An outline. And again, this is all summarized from. In-depth before, but we have summarized the cost to maintain and then. Improve slash replace elements and assets over time. I won't go into the specific numbers, but I'll draw your attention to the bottom left in the lighter blue color. There is a difference between the total annual allocation for long-term capital replacement. In the indoor and a higher cost for the outdoor. Now, again, just to clarify. This is what you would put aside if you were planning on an annual basis to. Put money into an account or to save money towards future costs. This is not expected to actually hit your budget. For the first several years of ownership, but over time you will have to start thinking about this. So. In your case, this might just hit into the park levy funds budget, but ultimately the. The allocation on an annual basis would be about $400,000 for the indoor over the 40, 50, 60 year time lifespan of the building. And then the outdoor would be a little more than a million dollars. The primary driver for a million dollars per year on the outdoor is the synthetic turf. You do have to replace that. It's useful life is eight to 10 years. If you go to the next slide, I'll add some context to that. So when we recommend synthetic turf above natural grass, which we don't always do. But in your case, based on community feedback and based on the goals of this project, we did. And so while synthetic turf is more expensive to build. It's much less expensive to maintain on an annual basis. Additionally, you can play up to three times as many games on synthetic turf as on natural grass. And especially for tournaments and events, those that are booked on the weekends in particular for. Traveling groups coming in and for those tournaments. And competitive play, you can charge higher fees on synthetic turf. And so looking at where these lines intersect, the higher cost of. Building synthetic turf versus the lower cost of natural grass. Those lines sort of over time cross typically between five and six years, again, within eight to 10 year useful life. And that's because you typically make money, facilities like this make money annually on synthetic turf. So the cost over time goes down. And natural grass loses money with increased maintenance costs. So they go up over time. Next slide. So within the report, we've detailed in overview of the business model, local programming versus sports tourism. We've also provided insights and context to in-house and rental programming. But I did want to draw some particular attention to the balance of serving your local needs and being able to support. Regional events and tournaments that bring in non-locals. If you go to the next slide. I know that there's a lot of information on this. You may be interested in the full report to read into a couple of different charts that we provided in terms of sample schedules. But this sample weekly schedule effectively shows what would be programmed in a week when you've got a tournament on a weekend. And so for all intents and purposes, when you're thinking about structuring your truly local programs. Monday through Thursday will primarily on a tournament weekend be dedicated to local programming camps, leagues, clinics, et cetera. And then on Friday converting over for your tournament and event usage, whether that requires setup or use of the flexibility of. Of these assets as they've been designed to require minimal turnover in most cases, Friday through Saturday would be regional programming. Now, it's really important to recognize a few things. Number one, not every weekend will have a tournament for the indoor. Not every weekend will have a tournament for the outdoor. There will be many weekends and we'll know this well in advance. Of when those tournaments are, and so we can still offer local programming. The second factor to consider is that even when you're running a regional event that does bring in non-locals. Still, a good volume of those teams, especially your market will be local teams. So. In looking at case studies and real world operations from comparable facilities. Typically at least 66% of all visits are from the local population, from the resident population. Usually that's more like 70 or 75%. And so although this does check the box for both local and sports tourism or regional play, it's important to recognize. That locals do get priority access and will make up the vast majority of the users. At the same time, this is still a phenomenal complex in terms of its number of assets, size of assets and, and frankly, your market. In terms of the ability to serve the local public and generate economic impact. If you go to the next slide, this is a summary of financial performance potential. We have not completed a full financial forecast or pro forma. But looking at our database, which has over 700 facilities with full detail. And several thousands of other facilities across the country represented through surveys and partial information. We have really great data on how these facilities perform. On the financial performance side, this chart shows or these charts show both revenue up top and net operating income or operational income. At the bottom, and you'll notice that we've segmented these into public, hybrid and private. What I want to draw particular attention to is the fact that public facilities typically generate less revenue. And do provide a subsidy, whereas private facilities generate more revenue and strive for profitability. That is not meant to represent effectiveness of operations. It's really about the delivery model. Simply put, the public can afford to provide services in ways the private sector obviously cannot always because they've got. Different debt obligations and different cost obligations. So oftentimes that hybrid model of a publicly owned and privately operated or privately supported through operations. Model does create a little bit of that sweet spot where you have maximum service to the community and close to or slightly above. Close to or slightly above profitability or the break even mark. And then the final slide here in summary of the O and M plan is economic impact potential. This is not public hybrid private. This is low mid high. This is really reflective of effectiveness of of bringing in those events, the types of events. And the priority on number of weekends that you want to allocate for regional tournaments and events. Suffice it to say with eight indoor courts that also support sixteen volleyball courts and twenty four, excuse me. Pickleball courts, but also effective use for cheer, dance, gymnastics, wrestling, judo, taekwondo, twenty one different events types. That can be held on the sports side on the indoor and then nine different events soccer, lacrosse. Flag football, football, ultimate frisbee, etc. On the outdoor fields. That provides a lot of versatility and a lot of flexibility of use to maximize. Economic impact. And while we've provided this range of low, mid and high, I think it's. Probably important to just state, there are many facilities that that we're closely tied to some several of them we operate. That with similar assets actually break sixty seventy seventy five million dollars of economic impact. Those are new dollars spent in Rochester. If you reach those levels, that would not be there, would not be spent in Rochester. But for those tournaments events, those create jobs, new tax revenue streams, support local businesses. And obviously, as I mentioned before, not just serving non-locals, but also. Creating better options for your local residents to participate in their own backyard in competitive sports. So with that, I will turn it back over to Ben, I think to lay on the plane with some steps.
Yeah, so quickly, just to finish up here, kind of our next steps of where we're at. So we are planning to have a. One final open house here in the fall and continue to receive that community feedback and implement that where we can. Beyond that would be, as I mentioned at the beginning here, a vote coming up later this fall on the sales tax extension. If that vote were to be a positive vote, then we would get into full design, which will include site selection. Confirm the final programming and amenities that'll be there. And and then select what we what the policymakers want to do for a operating model. The anticipated schedule there is based on, you know, kind of borrowing some of that. Tax revenue ahead of time for a three-year process from purchase through construction and opening the facility. So with that, that'll conclude our presentation and we're more than happy to take questions or feedback.
Thank you so much for a great presentation. I will let council member Wal kick it off.
On a slightly different level than forty five minutes ago, I'm excited as all get out about this. This is a great thing. I really appreciate the planning that has been done. Did the indoor portion of this possibility? Grow in the feedback that you got from the community? As opposed to the outdoor amenities?
Yeah, I'll be happy to field this one. So the short answer to that would be yes, I think if you remember back when we came before you in February to ask for this permission, we. Had some initial ideas about outdoor field space and pickleball and and some support indoor facilities. That's. Changed as the process has gone on. Again, really looking at all that data and the community engagement we're able to have. Did help us land in a different place than I think where we started in February.
Now, that really is commendable because I got some of the same feedback from the community last winter and spring. And really appreciate that you heard the community.
Yeah, absolutely. Great engagement approach. It sounds like a lot of varied input and. It's really nice to know where gaps are for future planning and hopefully we'll have a chance to finish the planning and design of this. I have a specific question about volleyball, knowing that we have fairly significant volleyball assets in the community. How did that rise up as such a significant? Factor in the multi-use courts indoor?
Yeah, I'd be happy to take that one. So. I think just the the multi-use courts in general was the the primary. Goal and amenity that we were trying to achieve. And so, you know, within the the basketball court footprint. You know, you could overlay the sixteen volleyball courts on top and really just showing that that use can happen. And we've also heard that at the National Volleyball Center, it's nearly impossible for community members to get into that space and use it at. Hours that are reasonable. It 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 feedback that we received is that you you might be able to get access, but it's very late in the evening. Or it's in the middle of the day. It's it's and so by providing those multi-use courts with. Your your multiple sports, you know, we're we're freeing up and kind of alleviating pressure throughout the community.
Yeah, I really like that about this plan that it does. Invest significantly in a new asset, but also creates the space for more access to our other resources in the community. I love to see the the features of the walking track and the. Indoor and outdoor play area, having gone to lots of tournaments. It's really nice to see that there are those family friendly features, even just that I was wrote it down like why at one extra basketball court, but even just as a nice. Asset for other kids to be doing while their siblings are potentially in tournaments. It just makes a lot of sense and. It's nice to see those just little extra features that will make this a much more usable and user-friendly experience. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. On slide twenty four, the the Zoom presenter mentioned. That you may have to hit into the park levy. For this for funding. So I'm wondering what the overall cost is. And probably this could be easily calculated because I'm your X Y, you know, the equilibrium. For the. For the artificial turf. What is the cost variable between installation throughout that ten-year annual maintenance cycle? Is is one significantly more expensive than the other?
Yeah, so sorry, let me let me clarify one thing briefly here. When I mentioned the park levy, that was simply recognizing a potential source. In many communities, they'll tap into the general fund. You have a park levy and so that would be a different potential option for you. There is certainly a difference in costs and if we were to go back to that slide or just in the interest of time, I'll recommend referencing it on your materials. It is more expensive to install synthetic turf on the front end than it is natural grass. When it comes time to replace. Synthetic turf eight to ten years, you typically are replacing the top surface, which are the fibers of the grass and the infill. It's about sixty percent of the overall cost, the subterranean, the crushed rock, the drainage system, etc. That does not need to be replaced for twenty or twenty five years. I would also mention that when thinking about natural grass. It is not the case that natural grass gets built once and then never has to be repaired. Bad months, bad, bad weather, overuse, etc. Can all damage natural grass as well. And so the comment that I made about natural grass costing more over time and typically. Operating in a subsidy, whereas synthetic turf fields cost more to build, but then operated a profit. That's really sort of the the ongoing annual usage until you get to that replacement period. But typically in eight to ten years, you're going to have not only a replacement of your synthetic turf. Upper surfaces, you'll also have significant investments required for most grass fields to re-crown, re-drain, fix. Irrigation, rebuild swales, etc.
If I could maybe just add quickly, I think that maybe this might be a little bit where you're going based on sometimes when you ask budget questions. We didn't want to present you something that was just you build it now and it's there, but be be thinking about. How over time you continue to invest and reinvest in existing and and new park facilities and that that would. Be a consideration for your overall operating model to make sure that that is factored in.
Yep, I think the gentleman did a great job of kind of explaining that and I. Sort of knew that answer, but I just wanted it out there. And then my last question is. On slide fourteen, the presenter mentioned a need for tennis courts throughout the community. That was one of the things that was identified during the gaps analysis. And I saw a couple of parks listed that were going to get. Tennis courts refurbished or replaced and I'm just being greedy here because we had some lovely tennis courts in Slatterly Park that are no longer there and I'm wondering if those are going to be replaced. So you don't have to answer that. I'm just going to tuck that in.
While you have parks leadership.
Yes, while I had your attention.
I will be so bold as to answer that question. So there are tennis hard courts planned to come back into Slatterly. There was a. Court surface study done last year through the park department and several locations were identified and. The two that'll be on the park board agenda tomorrow or two that were identified and there are some additional ones that will be worked on in the near future.
Awesome. Thank you. How about those lights at the ball fields there? Are they coming back?
It council member key.
I this is a bit of a follow-up on council member Kirkpatrick, but and and again, I'd like to ask you because you've got some experience with these sports things. This has come to me more and I've been a supporter of this sports tourism and the EDA side with the idea of getting the community benefit. Once we have that sort of space, but but I am worried about the operational model on that. And I I think when you do community engagement, you're only dealing with people who are asking for that that wellness side. What what is the right not not so much what Evan presented as far as what the options are, but is this a would you portray it? Do you see successful ones having? Membership sort of thing? Is it is it the community? Soccer thing has an arrangement with the program? Where does what is the business model that makes this successful? Because the worry is that. We might be successful on the E A D A site, but are we going to be maintaining this as a a public? Asset the way we do other parks or is this my the model appears to be, we're going to use the the tourism. To support this community asset and I want to I want a better feeling that that's that's going to work.
I second that question.
Yeah, and I'm I'm gonna kick it back to Evan online to answer that. And Evan, I think if you could share a couple of the case studies that we we looked at.
Yeah, well, Evan's, sorry, this is Aaron. Your honor, well, Evan's queuing and I think. One of the slides that's relevant in the space is a slide twenty seven. And I think it may be interesting to get pulled out, but that's sort of at a very high level, like your net financial performance projected, as Evan said, based on a number of. Historical variables and factors, but you can see a public operating model, a private operating model and something kind of in between that has. Convey, yeah, convey some public and private benefits. So I mean, those are all conversations that we, you know, yet to be had, but. In general, the projected either operating subsidy or, you know, the private model obviously projects some kind of. You know, residual income there. So I I think it's something that we obviously need to, you know, further evaluate. But that's like twenty seven is a good place for you to look at.
But that does not take into consideration the capital costs of maintenance. That's just for operating.
I'll defer to Evan on that, but I thought that was reflected.
Yeah, so I'll start with that question. In the way that we look at financials, even when. We've got data from facilities that have not been reinvested, we take a look at how we can mitigate that because the reality is. You should be putting in every single year preventative maintenance dollars. And so that is included in that high level. Summary expectations of revenue and expenses. I'll say that, so I I think that answers that. I'm happy to come back to it. For the for the first part, really as the owners of the facility, it should be your charge to decide how you want it to be operated. In most cases, and I'll give you a specific example from Hoover, Alabama, facility that we. Helped to bring out of the ground and now we've managed, in fact, we just. A couple of weeks ago, got got our extension for the next five years to continue to operate that facility. There is a clear. Charge that that facility should generate its revenue from tournaments primarily. And that the local recreation components should be at as limited a cost as possible to residents. And while it may seem like a dreamlike scenario, that is a perfect case case study of how a facility can. Generate enough revenue through tournaments and events and the ancillary revenue streams, particularly food and beverage, gate, parking, etc. From the from the regional play to help to support even subsidized local play. That facility in particular generates about eighty five million dollars of economic impact. Is what we're on pace for this coming year, seventy five thousand plus hotel rooms per year. It operates at a significant operational surplus, much higher than even the private model. That I showed you in these numbers and the reason for that is generating so much revenue from the tournaments. And so. The last thing I'll tell you is this, sixty percent of the inventory of time at that facility, which is an indoor outdoor. Including outdoor fields, including outdoor tennis courts and an indoor facility that's slightly larger than than what we're talking about here. Sixty percent of the time is given away to parks and recreation programs and they are very low cost programs runs purely through parks and recreation. So that facility is able to not only generate enough to sustain, but enough to profit from regional sports tournaments and the ancillary revenue streams associated. So that on your Monday through Thursday, even subsidizing people's participation. Or teams participation, local teams participation in tournaments and events, that that's as low cost as possible to the residents. And the facility is still pumping a significantly positive operational cash flow.
Yeah, thank you for that. I saw your chart in there and again, I. I guess I'm gonna push back a little bit and say if these things were profitable, the private sector would be doing them. So I know why we're doing it a public sector. And I'm okay with that if we get this other benefit, but I also know our city is going to take the risk on that operational model. And it may come back the same way. Five years ago, the Mayo Civic investment came back. It says. It's much more expensive to operate than you thought and it's difficult to get that usage. So again, this process, when you were up here, I was looking for those insights. That says this is the the right the membership model works or. Don't do it that way or it's it's open to the public. And, you know, I'm looking at when we've got some of these other assets in our schools and other places, we just don't have a good. Operational model to take advantage of. I I'm glad to see you're not building pools. We have pools. We don't have a way to get to them. And that's what we need to, that's what I'm worried about as I watch this go along. And I am supportive of trying to get these in there for both the economic development to sports tourism, but also for that asset in our community over time.
Thank you. Councilmember Dennis first. Okay. Yeah, so once again, at five o'clock, I think this should have been its own study session for future reference. But I I do agree with council member Keen that we maybe underestimated the cost of this. I looked at, you know, the the low. Figure in your opinion of cost slide where it's the lowest estimate is over the amount that over sixty five thousand that we are. Looking at. So I do, I think that some of the costs need to be really looked at closely for maintenance operation. However, I also want to say that I hear people who are from. Seniors and people who are struggling to compete for space for their athletic needs. And you cannot put a price tag on mental health and kids need to get back out and reconnect. And so. I am a supporter of this complex for the reason that I'm a supporter of kids coming back from COVID and not being isolated and for people. Reconnecting in sports. So that I want to say that I I understand we making sure that there's local engagement. But that's so, so important and to make sure that the location is going to be vital, making sure it has a bus route if it's somewhere. You know, so that people can access that, not in the necessarily the wealthy part of the area, but in the place where. Where local people from all, sorry, my thing, fuck with my hands. But have making sure that there's an ability for people to be able to access. I have a couple of questions. I know there's at five o'clock, you mentioned there's for public engagement. I I've gone to several of your things and. A lot of its tech engagements, you know, scan here, join us here. So maybe when I kind of. I don't know, I don't want to doubt when you said it's a heavy. Community engagement, robust, multi-layered, all-inclusive process, which may, those are, those are very powerful language. So. I I hope I hope that's true, but I do feel like some of the the public engagement I've been to has been. Online and things, maybe not people who might have language barriers or, you know. Ability with wifi and 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 transportation. So when you come, when you're saying this. I'm quoting, I'm hoping quoting right, multi-layered, all-inclusive, robust, you know, heavy engagement. How many unique individuals in the nineteen hundred people that you have surveyed? What was a makeup of of were they all different individuals, local individuals, what kind of background? Yeah, that that's a good question and one that's difficult to answer very specifically, but I can say that. When we did the surveys, the surveys initially, those nineteen hundred surveys, we found a real lack of diversity. In those surveys, we thought we found that it represented primarily. Middle and upper income individuals that were white in background and that is really informed the rest of the process. And which is why we created those outreach events. And where we went to groups and organizations that were already attracting people that we weren't hearing from. And we tried to create a variety.
And we tried to create a variety of ways to collect input at those events. So for example, Mohammed had Mohammed Lawal, the owner of LSC Architects, attended several of these events as well. We had soccer nets and soccer balls and we had basketball hoops and basketballs. We had whiteboards where we were writing down comments. We had sticky notes for kids to draw. We had kids were coloring ideas that they were collecting. We had all of our materials translated into four languages. We had translators available on site at these meetings. And if they weren't literate, we were grabbing translators and trying to set up times that they could meet with them. So we 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 really felt that we did all that we could to reach people and make it easy for them by going to them. And so I know on the on the it looks as though it's very tech savvy because those materials are expected by so much of the community, but we did enormous effort to reach beyond that.
Said three thousand touch points. I was going to ask, what is the touch point?
Participants.
Okay, so three thousand participants, nineteen hundred unique individuals. Is that what?
Nineteen hundred responded to surveys. Another eleven hundred or so, if my math is correct, another eleven hundred or so either were participants in some of these outreach events or focus groups.
Um, okay, well, okay, well, wonderful. And then I I just community engagement is so important. I have a lot of other questions. I know it's five o'clock, so I can touch base with people. But the one other question is it was said, I don't want to make sure to quote it right, program will be will be, the city can now determine the programming needs. Can see how it fits, reposition ourselves, wellness, community benefit. Can you say so that in the future, let's say, can the city just have then, we want to do more of a cultural something we want to, what kind of future control or I shouldn't say control, that's not the word, future influence does the future council have on the use of this building?
So so Amanda may want to follow up my response because I'm not sure I'm getting the question quite, the intent quite right, but just some examples of what a space that you might have that kind of future determination. When Amanda shared the program with you, saw some places, some spaces on that program called Focus Space, I believe. Do we call them Focus? Yes. And those are intended to have a variety of uses, everything from mothers' rooms to prayer rooms to focus study to small conference meetings. And so that's the kind of flexibility and potential future change of use that that could occur similarly when we talk about those fields and courts. You know, we we list very specifically the eight basketball because we heard the need for that. And that's the number we need for a regional draw as well. So they well align. We heard for pickleball. So we're saying those same eight basketball courts can be twenty-four pickleball. You may, as a city, decide that you have such a demand for pickleball that you want to leave at pickleball four days a week. And those are the kind of program changes that I think we wanted to allow you to make that determination with community use. Did that answer your question?
I I think so. I just want to like, I guess for looking into the future twenty, thirty years, you know, forty plus, that makes sure that if there is a need, I know economic development is one of huge job roles of the council. But if we wanted to say, oh, let's let's not make this a sports complex anymore. Let's make this a cultural, you know, if we wanted to completely redo, we'd have the ability as a, not we, but like in fifty years from now, the council to redo it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Councilmember Dennis, I think, answered that question. So you know, ultimately, we don't know the answer to that yet. I would say in general, if it's going to be more of a publicly oriented and operated facility, you would have a wide degree of discretion in terms of how you want to adjust programming or use in the future. You know, this is something that generally in the city of Rochester that you'd have some discretion of. Now, if you enter into a contract with a private operator, it really would then be predicated on the terms of the conditions of that contract. So we don't know what those are at this point. But that's something you want to talk about in the future is what kind of future flexibility do you have? What kind of term are you talking about? And we'll we'll get to that, you know, later on, but it's not not yet in terms of how we understand that.
And maybe I could just add quickly that since you're on this slide that talks about future. Those are things that if you're procuring a site, if that is an option, this ball to continue to look at, there could be the potential in the future where there's the support of this site could provide other opportunities like joint use of the parking or things of that nature, depending on how more of the final design is laid out. I think the key is over time, the city has continued to, you know, look at different uses of different facilities and we're just now kind of getting into that space for this. But I think the intent would be to build with the intent that there still will be something new fifty years from now or even twenty years from now. But to be as flexible as possible so that you have ability, you or future you fifty years from now has the ability to be thinking about that in in a space that has been developed if that occurs. All right, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. Just very quickly, jumping off of your concerns, Mr. Keen, I appreciate the Zoom presenters highlighting Hoover, Alabama, and the profits that that facility sees overall, but Hoover, Alabama is typically thirty to forty-five degrees warmer than we are in the wintertime. So comparing their outdoor activities and the funds that might be raised from those is really quite different than what we have the potential to do here. So I'm wondering if we could get kind of a, what's the word I want? Yeah, a more similar climate reference point that could give us some more real numbers that we could maybe sink our teeth into because I know a lot of people aren't going to be heading out there to do something in their down coat that's about ten inches above the ground in February.
And there's the stadium in that model, I think, as well. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to provide just, we we can follow up and provide some more regional comps for you. Happy to do that.
Thank you. All right. Any final comments, questions? All right. Thank you so much. Ben, do you want to wrap us up? Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody for coming. All of you who have participated in the process and been part of our contract team. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers for focusing in on that and the timing that you provided. Just wanted to point out that next Monday is the fifth Monday and and part of your adopted council meetings. You do not have a meeting that Monday. The next study session is on August seventh, and that is an update that we've mentioned a few times about the downtown building energy transition and district energy update and where we're sitting with that project financially and some future opportunities. And then also, I'll get it right this time, North Broadway Avenue Design Update, that is a road north of Silver Lake. So next extension of North Broadway and then something hopefully to look forward to on August fourteenth, council learning session, work with Bethany von Steinberg. We are securing a site and we will get that up to you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you at seven.